Did you share with everybody along the lines of our common prayer and our prayers?
Oh, okay. In front of you, in front of the study of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States, I stand on my own personal duty, our idea is that every couple of years, not in the last five years, we have to call handle it, just to show you or not, keep them in that, a couple more of them will be more intuitive. That reminds me what this is all about, is the Constitution and why I went maybe and they took care of. And to go along with that, exactly the flag day, I put the flag there with clearly on the internet. This man did hear, I didn't know that, I had no idea if he had to hear the word. So, actually, you hear the flag, you never know what's going on, you hear baby staring at over there, he's got all hands.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for sharing that.
So, back time.
That's my question, please stand. Heavenly Father, we worship both our great women and those who lead us in our communities, towns, and national government. Give each of us your calling and may we each put a high value on justice, rights, and honesty in the future. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, will we do the Freedom of Information Act? In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, members of this meeting and its agenda were provided to all listening here and persons requesting information. Well, uh...
Commissioner Bronkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Grant?
Here.
Commissioner Lotham?
Here.
Commissioner Melkin?
Here.
Commissioner Poston?
Here.
Commissioner Holman?
Here.
All right, number three is the Public Hearing Order number 2021, that's your twenty-one budget order amendment. I make a motion that we have our public hearings, anybody sign up for speech?
No one has signed up for speech.
I make a motion to pass the Public Hearing Order Amendment. And discussion? Which one?
Yes.
The public hearing, so nobody signed up for speech, there's no evidence of petition. So, now we are in the discussion part. So, you're reading?
We want our official vote to be from the commission.
Yes, because the actual vote on the order is down.
Okay, so we're open for...
So, if you open the public hearing, if there's no vote coming in, there's no exposure.
Okay, but any comment?
There is none.
So, my first move is that we all are going to leave the cameras. All right, and so are we going to close the public hearing? Close the public hearing. Yes, close the public. I make a motion to close the public. I have a second. All right, Mr. Clay, close, and now we're into our regular meeting of the General Government Committee for Commissioned Readings. We've already been through our opening acts, we've had our four-year readout, and now we are into the consent agenda. Does anybody have a motion to consent to the agenda meetings that we're having out here in our faculty?
Yes. So, my concern is that our commission meeting is, as I was saying, is L and D, so I would go with that. My one thought.
Question, yes, thank you.
I make a motion for the second. Anyone have a second? One other question?
Commissioner Bronkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotham?
Yes.
Commissioner Melkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Holman?
Yes.
Motion carries on.
I have number six, the main difference, the main one piece before.
Well, as usual, we've got a lot more on the district. All South Carolinians, age sixteen plus, are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I went on the South Carolina PHEC Vaccine Finder website this morning. There is next day availability for appointments to receive the first dose of vaccine. And in fact, if you're open to the one dose, one gun, Johnson or Johnson, that's also available next day. So, that's what I found this morning. The fire chief continues to stay in contact with the surrounding fire department and public safety entities, the county, and monitors any updates in the CDC guidelines or South Carolina PHEC guidelines regarding necessary updates to the fire department operations associated with the COVID Delta variant. The fire chief on a certain beach mission, prized by the month, who thinks that the fire department operation is necessary. And as I reported last month in the district lobby, I have seen back over the public with restrictions since Tuesday, the first of June. I am off on paid invitation, and I will be out of town this Thursday, the first of July. The following Thursday, the eighth of July, and if you need immediate assistance when you need to find me, Dan knows how to track me down, and I will be returning to the office on Monday, the twelfth of July. We're awaiting others from the community. We had a successful, another successful adopted highway cleanup on Saturday, the twelfth of June. Very much appreciate all those helping make our communities look better. We have an opportunity for adopted highway to Saturday, the eleventh of September, 2021. We need a third parking lot at the corner of Fort Johnson and Holly Road in Kingsley County. They still have an email I sent out on Wednesday, the ninth of June, 2021, and some follow-up questions from the commission concerning the information I had sent out from the South Carolina Association of SBDs, presentation by C.D. Rhodes last week in May, when we went to life board. And prior to the wastewater committee meeting at six-thirty on the twelfth of July, the ethics committee provides free training, it's a virtual training, we'll start at five-thirty here, and you can get all your questions answered about the annual statements of economic interest you file with the ethics committee. And Dan is in the process of setting back up meetings. It's going to be via Zoom on the screen, we'll have audio dial-in teleconference. You can't make it here at five-thirty until call in. We're trying to make it as convenient as possible to all members of the commission. If you have any specific questions about the annual statement of economic interest or any other filing, that's the time you get those questions answered. The fire department participated in the viewing, the funeral for battalion chief Hupp, Monday, the seventh of June, Tuesday, the eighth of June, 2021. I got to meet the fire chief for Charleston, former PSC fire chief, and several other retired members of the PSC fire department for viewing for battalion chief Hupp. And thank you to the fire department, making all that happen. I know the family really appreciates your efforts, and do that for the viewing and the viewing. So, I sent you an update on the progress of strength and collection efforts on the liquid utility bill, and the district met with, so it's now with Tim Muller from Rosenhaigut, on Monday, the seventh of June, 2021. I sent the commission an email last Thursday, the twenty-fourth of June, 2021, with a memorandum from proof concerning next steps with strengthening collection efforts on the passing of the utility account. The district will be exploring options to place statutory lien on properties with only two of them. It's not a new practice for the district, but I wanted to give the commissioners an update, how the wastewater department is incorporating a lien process to strengthen collection efforts on the liquid utility account. I wanted the commission to understand that the district's legal team with Rosenhaigut has an attorney that specializes in collections, and will be helping the district with the processes to strengthen those collection efforts. There will be much more information to come in future wastewater committee meetings about strengthening those collection efforts. Commissioner Lawson and I had a very productive evening at the aquarium for the Metro Chamber event, that was the seventeenth of June. I was able to get my thirty-second elevator speech in with Representative Mace and Representative Spencer Wetmore concerning the SBDs' need to have access to $2.1 billion in state coronavirus fiscal relief fund. So, currently, SBDs do not have access to that top $2.1 billion. It can be used for infrastructure projects like sewer. So, I was able to explain to both of them, the district has sewer expansion projects that fit the federal funding requirement very nicely. If SBDs are granted access to those $2.1 billion at the statewide level. So, the state can still recognize the need for SBDs to have access to this funding and include SBDs in that allocation. So, those discussions will likely take place at the statewide level in August. And I've been in close contact with Brian Flynn, who's the executive director of the South Carolina Association of SBDs, and he assured me last Thursday, the twenty-fourth, that he received positive feedback from Columbia associated with getting SBD access to that $2.1 billion. Senator Sen has also indicated positive feedback at the state level on getting SBD access to the funding. So, when the district has, say, a project for $7.43 million for two of sewer extensions, that would help 208 residents get on sewer, that's kind of a perfect fit for the district to slice that $2.1 billion in funding. County council members Jenny Honeycutt, Anna Johnson, and Brandon Moody have been made aware of the fact that SBDs don't have access to that $2.1 billion. The aquarium event was also, the first time I was able to meet in person, city council member Karen Jackson, and went in depth about my concerns with the county's plan to privatize a landfill operation, a collection of curbside recycling material. So, I have an article for you, this was given to me by wastewater director Hoffman, and this goes into detail on some of the perils associated with privatizing collection efforts for solid waste. This is an article I sent to Commissioner Woolsey, the chair of the Solid Waste Committee, and wanted to relay this, this is a recent example, this is an article from the twenty-sixth of May, and it goes into detail that the city of Jacksonville is having to pay city employees overtime because they can't get their contractor who's supposed to pick up the garbage to pick up the garbage. They're having quite a bit of trouble. Why I give you the city of Jacksonville, I provided a previous example. This is a city with a model where you have a publicly funded or publicly owned landfill operation, and you have a privatized collector, all right? And basically, the city of Jacksonville has residents that have not had garbage or garbage picked up for weeks, and they're to the point of desperation where they need to get city employees to go out and pick up trash because they can't get employees or they can't get their privatized haulers to pick up trash. So, why I am harping on this is basically that there are a few problems with this scenario that you see in the way that state Jacksonville is exceeding $264,000 in fines against various privatized haulers here. So, number one, I can only assume the county could sell the selected contractor all of the trucks and equipment it currently uses to perform the curbside recycling. Okay, once that contractor owns all of that equipment from the county, the county becomes much less sensitive to future annual increases to contract because it's so expensive to get back in the business of collecting curbside recycling once you sell all of your trucks and equipment that you use, all right? The initial investment to get back in the business of collecting both recycling and solid waste is astronomical, and that's why the contractor would gladly pay the county top dollar for both its trucks and equipment. Once the contractor owns all of that equipment, the county's never going to get back in the business of curbside recycling, and whatever that contractor says the increase is, that's basically what it's going to be. So, you heard that here first. Number two, these private waste hauling companies, like the Republic, a waste manager, they view the JITSC solid waste department as a profit-gifter, okay? And Republic, I gave you those previous articles saying that it took the Department of Justice, as well as the Alabama Attorney General, to sue them, to enforce digestives in that operation because the Republic owns eighty-two percent of the entire transportation landfill operation. And so, that's what they do, they snuck out of the competition, they're large, they're capitalized, they have the spending power to do so. I've seen this in the Midwest, in the Great Lakes region, Walter's seen it in the Northeast, now they're coming Southeast. And so, why I'm driving this home is that here, we're different, okay? Where I come from, we spend a lot of money to invest in snowplow operations, okay? Because we got the winter. Here, we get hurricanes, all right? If we had to get out of the business of solid waste, and we had to sell all of the trucks and all of the equipment to get out of the operations of solid waste, if a hurricane hit, we would be sitting and waiting for federal contractors to come in here and start the cleanup process. If you have a problem with Thermo, Rodorian, the cleanup process, you're talking weeks longer till the federal government finally gets here to stop, start the cleanup process, and remove the stormy debris. So...
What can we do here on getting hard work with the local program?
Sure, and so that's why I...
What... What can we do right now because we just stopped the crazy thing going on?
So, what we're doing, okay, I drove all of this home to Councilwoman Carol Jackson, and her jaw dropped. She's like, "Never heard of it." And, "Well, I've seen it, Walter's seen it." We spoke at length on how they do this. And so, she's spoke with Matt Althop, who is the environmental services manager superintendent at the city. And we, this week, Carol Jackson meets with the mayor, and she's been lobbying to have a public works commission meeting. And once you have the city on the board with the seriousness of this situation, that's going to put pressure on the county to do something differently. And so, that's what we're pushing for, Matt Althop, Councilmember Jackson. We're going to hopefully have a public works commission meeting with the city. When we have that, we will invite everybody where they can come, they can hear. Matt Althop worked for waste management, Walter worked for a private waste hauler as well. They know the business, they know how this works, and so we want to get the word out, and hopefully the county might change the way it's doing business without a public RSP to go through this process if they're going to privatize both landfill operations and curbside collecting.
The city is going to have the same problem that we're in today, the county's got a private position of landfill, right?
On a much higher scale.
Is there anything, or any type of organizational thing where all of the waste companies, like us, the city, Aldo, Mount Pleasant?
Door Charleston, absolutely, we'll be reaching out to them. I am in contact with Chrissy Olverus at St. Andrews PSC, she knows what's going on as well. We've got to make noise about it, and we've got to make noise about it before this contractor, or...
So, he's the group that you're seeing to make sure the county knows, definitely, whether he's scared of that.
Correct, and that's why, you know, if I first stop with the city, it's taking the loudest noise. And that's what we're hoping to get noise out of the city. All right, I give up my two clocks for that. There's a webinar opportunity this Wednesday, the thirtieth of June, at 1:00 p.m., it's the South Carolina Special Purpose District webinar, exploring ways for SBDs to maximize their general fund. It tends to share insights on the dating market, how SBDs can utilize their fund while still protecting their assets. If you want, participate on that, I can send you the link, I'm registered for one o'clock this Wednesday. We have a meeting with Congress Financial Advisors, we discuss different options for debt on both the general fund side and the wastewater proprietary fund side. You'll be hearing more about the capital markets option at the wastewater committee meeting on Monday, the twelfth of July. And just like the district went out to the public bond market for a debt issuance back in 2014, it was for about $2,130,000. The district needs to explore all options associated with future debt issuances for the wastewater proprietary fund. There's going to be much more information on that as we move forward with our debt option. So, besides the already scheduled wastewater committee meeting on the twelfth of July, please mark your calendars attentively for another wastewater committee meeting, the second Monday in September. That's Monday, the thirteenth of September, 2021. And we're going to provide the wastewater committee with an update associated with the procedural changes with the district's rate and new ordinance that was previously mentioned. So, we modified the ordinance to the right, now we have to go in there procedurally and make those modifications that will be presented in September. The second Monday in October, that's the eleventh of October. Ideally, the eleventh of October will be the first Ways and Means Committee meeting for preliminary discussions associated with this year's twenty-three budget, mainly some of the big-ticket capital items. The commission is aware of the capital item fluctuate much more year-to-year than the operating budget to the department. So, you can expect to see a presentation from Congress Financial with a lot of those capital items baked in, and so you'll understand some of those larger, big-ticket items. Much more information on those meetings to come over the next few months. The, there's an upcoming conference at the South Carolina Association of SBDs. We will be sending this out at the annual conference, which will be held Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of September, through Friday, the first of October, in Myrtle Beach. And that will be my management.
I have summary seven, the ordinance number 2021, that's your fourth, the twenty-one, the budget ordinance amendment. Second and final reading. I make a motion to pass the order. And then the second. Don't call voting.
Commissioner Bronkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Lotham?
Yes.
Commissioner Melkin?
Just to clarify this more better, this is the budget that is issued, you add those...
Correct.
Yeah, to also account for basically $220,000 in additional appropriation for the general firm, which is $30,000 for the five-year one.
I think that's it.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Olverus?
Yes.
Motion carries on.
I have number eight, regulation number 21-0003, acceptance of annual cost share agreement with the county of James Island. I make a motion that we accept the regulation number 21-0003. Discussion? Hold on, discussion. Again, if this is not legal and constitutional, it's highly harmful for us to treat our rights differently. We are here to look out for all of our rights and to have a nearby lift and to issue a tax credit to 5,500, approximately 55,000, the town of James Island, and Poppy Amber Marshall, Rose Mitchell, is wrong. And for commissioners who live in the town, who doesn't agree that, is wrong. So, I would be determined.
Right, can you throw our two words at me? And this is not happening. Excuse me? Right, can you...
Okay, tax payers, excuse me, I correct myself. We are treating our tax payers for the district to look at unincorporated Charleston towns and in the town of James Island differently. We give tax credit to town residents who are PSC tax payers on their annual tax bill. So, the taxes will come up, we're unincorporated Charleston town resident, they get that down, the town of James Island resident. This is not sustainable, so at some point in time, this district will help us, other districts can help us, figure out. We're going to be moving forward because this is not going to continue, not today. That's your argument?
I guess it's not, and...
All right, I'm good, you're standing.
I guess it's kind of spinning. We are not putting the taxes on the people in the town of James Island. The town of James Island is paying for partial third for their resident. They collect the tax from their resident, and they're using their money to pay part of the tax bill for their resident. We are not raising the taxes of just the non-incorporated. We are raising the taxes for all of our residents to do taxes, not only what? Real... But the town is offsetting that because they are lowering the taxes of their city because they are paying part of their city's bill. We are raising the taxes for all of our citizens.
Because again, it's the way you spin it, because it's been said publicly...
You're saying that you're way on the spin it, right?
It's been said publicly, time and time again. If town council did not vote for the cost share agreement and transfer $1 million to the PSC, taxes on town residents would be raised by forty percent. It was set over and over and over again since March of this year, and you're well aware of that. Now, you can spin it any way you want to spin it. I have nothing else.
Well, Kathy made a good point, which is part of what I was going to say. But the other part to look at is, look at it as a business type of decision. If you go to your doctor, if you go to your doctor and you have new cross-drawn shields, the doctor is going to charge you, the new cross-drawn shields are going to pay part of your bill, and you're going to pay the rest of it. But if you pay to United Healthcare, their charges are going to be different. So, if you have new cross-drawn shields, you might pay $5 for a senior pop, a senior. If you have United Healthcare, you may have to pay another $10. But the doctor is charging you the same amount. And that's why the taxes that we're charging to the residents of our area doesn't matter. But the insurance company, in this case, the county of Indiana, is paying a different portion of what the doctor will be charging you.
Now, here's where your analogy fails. You sit down and choose your health insurance plan, ready to work where you want, use the law, look at different package options. Unincorporated Charleston town residents don't have the option to annex into the town of James Island. They have their options. Some of them have the option with continuity to annex into the city of Charleston. But what we're doing is we're encouraging annexation of the city of Charleston by doing this, and we're also voting against taxes for ourselves, those of us who do this.
Number one, the city of Charleston, the reason that we just don't have all of the unincorporated things done inside the PSC is because they have, they assume the responsibility for a little careful angle, like day to day, going down, heading down highways, that's the real territory. And there's an area, and you look at that, that's what I call the road, that means they don't have good points... that means they don't have good points in the road. So you cannot blame the town or the city or the PSC for not having the people inside the PSC area.
But what the town is, is all of our tax payers, not really.
You finish talking before I interrupt you. What are the rules?
Yeah, that's all, that's what you should speak out on. I did not call on anybody else during the conference. Motion carries five to two.
Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
No.
Commissioner Lockland?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
No, no, no.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Okay, number nine, and what Bailey and Associates, really does.
I'm very happy to hear that Barry Bailey and Austin Hughes from Buck Bailey Associates. They came down from Lawrence, South Carolina. So Jim had nine of the audit teams this afternoon, give them a feel of what's going on with the district. They're conducting the planning efforts, and Austin has already been in West Columbia looking at the audit papers from the Grittingham group from the prior year. So both Gary and Austin will be onsite tomorrow. Trying to get them involved in the PSC system so they can start thinking around, understand our financial policy. So there'll be more dating days come back in the fall before the field work for the annual audit team preparing the annual financial statements as well. So you know what I missed or give any questions for the audit team.
Thank you.
Typically, we receive the audit and the financial statements in November of the year. Last year, we received it in January.
I think we have, uh, kind of fixed it or didn't feel better.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Number 10, recap the five stages under one construction project from our chief.
There's a handout on the rear pattern. So as you can see, this is a five-year project that started back in 2017. And the first one shows the expenditures by year by month. And as you work your way down, you can see what type of expenditures in the next block. A structural man, a construction worker, and so on. And finally, in the first block, we'll see that we did the DAB on, we are per se working that. We're going to free him from the HEPC, that's the cost of the legal and operating property. A per se from the bond, capital lease, or some of the equipment that meant the fire station. Now, total funding, uh, probably, that is, 8.33 million. We spent, it was 8.46 million. We had expenditures in excess of the fine in, of 192056. Doesn't mean that we were over budget, it just means that you had much fun on the financing. Starting in 2017, where we spent 72,047, or in 2018, we were spending, month, month, four, Melvin having a general fund, this fund just came out of there. It was great. So the way, the way that works is that we have a one-year warranty on the building and the landscaping and all that, um, FAFCON. There's a new thing, we call FAFCON, and they have to arrange for somebody to come out and fix it or look at, you know, we need, we need to. The rain, the grease crap are not in my place. We're attached to grease running off the roof. So our land, and how, let me, uh, initially, and they were going to have to charge a certain amount of money to somehow fix that, not, uh, not, uh, one year warranty. And this is the example of our builder, not by, not by our taxes. But after, when we get close to the end of the one-year warranty, the owner will come back out of us, and we're going to be, the plank off we're done with initially, we're going to be excited to build. You know, there's anything left, or have deferred, and the builder can have to fix that. I think we're in good luck.
And when is the one year warranty?
Uh, maybe, uh, maybe, uh, maybe. I'll get some ideas or ideas.
No, that's fine.
Like I said, Jim as well, he boils all these numbers down into coherent, you know, fucking for everybody to understand. So I'd just like to add a huge comment from the building as far as the fire committee meeting we held on the 3rd of May, 2021, at fire station number two. As you can see from the test site, replacing a fire station is not an historically quick process for the district. Let's just say for discussion purpose, purposes of the district starting budgeting, preliminary expenditures, the site passing survey, and that's the period of budgeting for fiscal year 23, that will put us on track to follow the same path of cutting a ribbon on the new fire station number two in fiscal year 27. So I'm not saying it has to take it that long, but these are not quick processes and to open new fire stations. So I'm grateful that the fire committee has already started that.
Number 11, the Liston of Bill Bluff property.
All right, so. So members of the commission will remember previous discussion on the combined 6.52 acres referenced in Bill's Bluff property during the meetings of July 2019 and July 2020. So prior to the past two years, the commission has had previous discussions concerning the future of these properties. While the fire chief served as the interim district manager, he paid appraisal for the 6.52.
Are you guys all right? We are out of executive session. The regular change down on the committee, the commission meeting is resuming, and, um, no action, we pay. I'll make a motion that he doesn't want to say it all, it doesn't follow the law. I'm saying we have two things on.
Yeah, I'm going to say more at a time. Obviously, this one, yeah.
So, because, yeah, it's a motion that we can do itself, and then we do. I make a motion that he, so probably the cost, I don't know.
Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lockland? Commissioner Lockland?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Poston?
Yeah.
Mr. Spitting down on top of.
I know, I'm on the fence, so sorry, I was almost going along. Okay, yeah.
Motion carries five to two.
All right, so then, what I handed out to you is the James Island Public Service District ordinance number 2021-05. Ordinance for the property sale of 23 acre at 1471 Valley Road, Charleston, South Carolina, 29412. Whereas, in order to the James Island Public Service District, JI PSC, permission for the property sale of 23 acres at 1471 Valley Road, Charleston, South Carolina, 29412. Charleston County TMS number 334-00-00-052 for an amount of $50,000 and $0,000 for their holding LLC. And whereas, the district is supplied to Department of Mine with procurement ordinance number 2014-002, section 9, that 901, real property claim back. And whereas, the district commission contacted for real estate services, EDRE Incorporated, for the property management of the legal commission meeting for 22nd March, 2021. And whereas, the time required between this and any proceeding ordinance to the regulation, this ordinance shall prevail when put back to the district's section. And now, therefore, the order contained by JI PSC, commission, the meeting will be assembled on the 28th day of June, 2021. Section 1, effective date, uh, this ordinance shall become effective, uh, July 26, 2021, as after second reading of an acceptable public hearing for the meeting prior to the regular commission meeting on the 26th of July, 2021.
Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Can I call for the votes, please? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Brown Crowe? Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lockland?
The last one, you're there.
Commissioner Milliken? Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two. Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lockland?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliken?
I'm sure John.
Yes.
Commissioner John? Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Aye.
So when the appraisals were presented to the commission, the consensus was that the new district manager evaluate the next step to the Bill's Bluff property. And so, through the process, we have Charlie on board, a real estate firm, and very similar to the process used, the sale of old fire station number one, the district would set the highest and best offer for the 6.52 acres on Wednesday, the 21st of July, that's in your marketing material here. And if the district were to obtain a highest and best offer, that would be deemed appropriate, consented to the commission, and the commission would see that highest and best offer at the next regular commission meeting scheduled for the 26th of July, 2021. So we have Charlie here tonight, who can go over the marketing materials. If you have any questions for him, you know, you can, you can say that, fire station.
Good evening, Commissioner, Charlie Al. Yes, we would propose to do the exact same process that we did for whole fire station number one. Put together the marketing materials, blanket it across the world, and, and like offers on a lot of the willing parts. Same exact process, this is an exciting piece of property. I talked to Chris Crane with the, with the County of James Island. He tells me he'll use his own community commercial and the larger pieces of those, those residency residential. You could build up to 21 residential lots there, and if we go there, it's just vacant. So I think we would get a significant number of offers, and I think we'd get good offers. Again, the process is, if we don't get an offer that we like, we don't sell them. But if we do, we do. So it gives you all the flexibility to make decisions, once we have offers. Which I can do for whole fire station number one.
Well, probably I went through it, and I was sorry to blab, but everything that clicked about Bill's Bluff, and, but, my concern is that I want to tell Camp Road where we're less, hey, care of that, and once you get finished with that, you can, you can wait there.
Whole, whole fire station.
I want you to put everything together in two minutes.
Oh, yes, I do.
Much more, you can get this property.
I understand. We are under contract, so whole fire station number one. Apparently, there were some hundred dollar solar tanks there, so the buyer had to go to the next level, get a phase two for that, uh, audit, so we gave them an extension to get that done. So that extension is going to end on block 12. And then we will know that they're going to close that, uh, block.
So far, I look, I mean, half the contract is just once they, um, doesn't look like, um, they're really carrying it or not.
Yes, and it does, and on the 12th, we're going to keep their bond in front of them.
Is that earnest money?
Yeah. I don't know, sometimes I don't. Yeah, by the 12th of July, we will know whether they're going to close the block. They either say, keep them on the back, we got a lot of them, or they'll take it up. And right now, it looks like they're absolutely not.
Um, do you know what they think, what they, what?
They have, they have put the property on market for weeks, and they're trying to figure out what to do. You know, they're talking about, they're talking about, uh, using venue, they're talking about brewery, they're talking about office space, they're talking about office warehouse space. Uh, they're, they're flexible, but depending upon what the cap is on. But the guy is fine, he's fine, I'm sure of that. He's down. Um, so that, that process is, is hard to work.
Look, they'll have to quote that when you come. He's going to bring us some real estate news, and say, hey, if you have the money, you're ready to come. That's what I want here, uh, don't come.
No, they haven't that close, they're not, there's no risk to it, but, I mean, that's what we're done, you know, they're, they're that close, and they, I mean, they're that, they have to know, they already, I think years ago, they used to have their own, like, gas tank or fuel tank or something, that other ground or something.
Well, they have a close, close round factor here, but he does move.
Yeah.
But it turns out there was some underground factors as well. And, and we've been sold, we're clean, built, and paid over every time. But any buyer that's going to want to do a phase two, make sure that, that, uh, before they.
And you got a record value now, or something like that.
It is, it is, and it's, the Bill's Bluff, I mean, you could have picked that up, uh, because as you all know, residential market is going to move.
Okay, right.
And, you know, we could introduce, I don't know, we could do 21 lots on the whole piece. I don't know if you do, we, it's only like we do 21 lots. I don't know if you could do 21 lots here, and even if it's all, uh, but I haven't figured that out, but it'll be a higher than they have, uh, the rest of that, and because of the, the residential part.
So, only as a small portion of the commercial.
That's right, the one piece that is 1.27 acres is on community property. And then the big piece is on RSL, for that, for that thing. I talked to Chris, Chrissy Crane, she said, yes, you can do residential and community property. So what we want to do is sell both pieces, not do two different things. I think our boundary is high, uh, we got one guy that should be able to 2.1 lot to you. And we're going to do as well.
Oh, that's a good point. And I spoke today about the possibility of perhaps extending the time through the offers to, like, August, simply because July was such a dead month for the low temporary. And it could really bring more attention to it, more builders, more possibilities, not have such a short timeframe for offer. Not have such a short timeframe for offer, if that's what you call it.
It is, it is, and I agree with, I agree with.
I just thought, August fifteenth, at least gives folks more time. Um, the other thing I was wondering is, the last sale, or possible sale of fire station number one, you know, we were brought all of the information with the seller or the buyer in our contract. I was asking David, perhaps you can list the top five, um, you know, choose missions, because our name had the entire mission, you know, with us, making decisions about, like, the top five offers.
Oh, no, I'll bring all of them. I should bring them all up.
Okay, well, I, we, we all offered for fire station one, so.
So we do need to have the calculation of sales to be known.
Um, you know, I think those, because it didn't work, why? I mean, you told us.
No, I can provide, I can provide the actual all.
You know, what was brought to us was a contract with the California company. I'm wondering if you can, um, see the top five.
Absolutely.
You know, the chair or a couple of people making decisions on these were selling to, and the deal coming to us.
Yeah, we certainly can do that. There's a lot, there's a lot.
Well, and the prior information of the two others out of the past three were later. I mean, wasn't even.
Yeah, exactly. And, but I can bring you this, the actual offer, you know, I may do it.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think the commission needs to see all the offers, you see, they're trying to comment, they are. Um, obviously, we have work with the home over there, and White House communication on Hampshire, and Dallas Ford, so that's your point of sense of that.
I know, I know, that's why I'm bringing this, this is the part that's usually a question.
Well, and, and writing for this day, that we're talking some pretty severe questions, and on those streets, and White House communication. So, you know, I know there was some kind of range that's in that area, but, um, obviously, there was. It hasn't moved, um, like I may say, um, my husband, he grew up on, actually, on the entire, his parents, okay, their companies grew up there, and they've gotten a bit that way, and yeah, we, that's other than. I think we're, we're meeting about this, you know. And I just thought that we could make it to that. And, you know, and you can see there are a few brands of, that are, you know, looking more like the water, that, you know, this, this, and this has, I don't like to speak very full of the, um.
They're counted, they're dotted.
Well, in the buyer, we do that, you know, the way the process would work, it was, is that if those are the James Island hotels, you have to have a full-on board plan, you can, um, you go to, well, whatever, what you know is, you go to the Tulsa campus. You use James Island rules, but you use Tulsa, uh, and the body of, through, through, that's what Chrissy bought.
Uh, I think that you can, you can take that, please, and something.
Okay, okay, maybe you just apply for.
You just kind of wear a hole.
Oh, yeah, that would be, yes.
Well, I'm probably going to be very clear on the commission right now. Personally, I have some suggestions there. For everybody that understands that, so. Um, one of the many reasons that I wanted to hang on to this topic was, we have a huge problem in the starting, the thing that's going to work. Now, the challenge is to go, when you have, got some, uh, base, and here, so, yeah, so, uh, first, uh, firstly, we're going to do that part a lot. And we have buildings, two sides on the floor, and I think we could, and, yeah. But I have, uh, reasons, you know, and I still have that, uh, and daily, that, uh, the challenge, whether or not the plan is going to fall, basis is true. Because if we were to, if we get the food, and that we're not going to have funds anymore than we are right now. That's the first. Um, and I would be very reluctant to sell the property until that will take place here. The other thing, Mary, is that, let's assume that if you take care, it is not going to be in the old quarter, it will, uh, what we have right now. These children spent more than, more than three-hundred-thousand dollars for last year, I remember two. The past couple of years, from repairs and stuff, they, not, not soon, from repairs and repairment of equipment and building, and so, it's not any kind of lottery, because we still, we're fixing, what is going to be, when our building goes there? And if we sell the property, we do not have anything to move to.
That's not going for, that's, that's.
That's better, we don't have any option, any money, or anything, you know.
Well, unless they're under, or raining, nothing goes, there's also liability, so you go right back to, to sell them ahead. Because it wasn't controlled property, or anything like that, so what could be announced, that is also liability on other side of it.
Well, the, the other side of the phone, I was going to mention, but the thing that we're doing is, we're, we're going to be telling you, I told you all, because the property is, um, rented, actually, three hundred dollars and all of that, if we do this now, before we find out that we have to send out a revision letter. We know we're going to have to do it, we're going to have to fix what we got now. So if, if we go ahead and sell the property, then we start talking to the highest level. Because there's going to be an increase, and that's, if there's something that's being, uh, okay, we're fixing what we got now. Or they're not going to have a, they're not serving, and we, if they have, they won't be able to.
I, I feel hard to say that, that's going to put it on one issue.
I'm just saying, uh, I'm bringing.
Here, here, we're going to have to, uh, I really agree with Alan, and what I'd like to do is make a motion to defer this. Because why do you think, so we know what happened to fire station one? I feel like we're jumping on this, because we're nervous about fire station one, because if you buy low, you, um, let's just defer this and, and start right here again at the July meeting, when we know what's going to happen with fire station one. Obviously, we have one-point-two-million-dollar budget, that we need to keep in this budget. And I don't disagree that the Lelandville's lot needs to be addressed completely. But rather, rather than spending a lot of time on this, too, because you are very strongly about it. It's the last urban twenty-four, F. F. five, in the town, in the town, in the city, and we need to bring this back up, lot twenty, lot, uh.
The meeting July the forty-third.
So I would say, I should defer this and take it back up on lot twenty-four.
Yeah, I can, um, we're going to give it up inside a week, um. And I, what I'm trying to do, I don't, I mean, I have a problem with that. And we can, it's, it's a form of, uh, lately, they, uh, we're getting to run now, which is not something two years ago, that we were talking about. I will reluctantly go along with the government, but I do want things down there. It's what other ordinance you see that, uh, that counts. Before we actually go through the policy, we, as we think, uh, time, we can get that, and go, it's taking off, forget it, but, so, that's the process. Nothing passing that I'm willing, but. I don't know. But.
I have a question, that's the same, I didn't, what, how much do you think of it?
One, oh, oh.
One, oh.
And I, and I, and I, I, you see, um, you know, we pushed this thing, we thought all the day, it was allowed to, just because of your calendar, and when, when you're accepting the package, that sort of thing. Um, I would be more comfortable postponing, uh, pushing the offer, maybe the middle, middle of, of, yeah. If that's any more time to, to send someone.
I think that's the most bad.
I agree, I agree, I'm, I'm already getting on this, if that's people on my case, for, for that. Um, but, uh, I, I would hesitate to wait till you're July meeting to make the decision, though, because I need time to, to finalize the package and get it out to people. So if you tell me tonight, yes, you do want to do this, but if we want to push the offer today, go office.
Eighteenth, Wednesday evening.
I made a motion to put this off.
We can second our terms.
Yeah, I have a, what I'm saying is, if there's a motion, we'll, we're going to call for a second, if there is, that, that, we don't want to.
And I just think a quick comment, Kathy, do you understand that, that August day is a part of the, the long-term season? I thought you were thinking it was a new year. No, it's a lot. Okay, because your motion is, well, and changes the date, the offers to, whatever.
August, uh, what is it, the?
Wednesday evening.
No. How much you want it for that?
So if we do that, then that gives you more time to decide the project, and we will know what happens to, to fire station number one, clearly, by then.
And that's part of the, um, that is. Well, I, I make a motion for, is there a second to the first of July meeting? I don't know. Well, I, no, she, she made a motion before her, so she asked for second. She just seconded, would mean now we have to vote on who's.
No, we have to do that.
Well, the best, or vote on it, I think, or, or please, you have your hand up, so I don't want to lose, um, voting.
Anything would be, either like this, or, or, or the way that it started, it's, it's, it's always, it's, I, he's delaying the sale. But we can go ahead and give the office, give, give the office, so. I don't want to tell about, because if we can do it, it's, it's already.
All right, so, and that's, at the end of the discussion, do you have a motion, do you have a second? Well, I just, my, my motion is to defer this conversation until the July meeting, and wait to see what happens with fire station one. That was my motion, and we were just seconded, so I think that's what we're, and that's what we're going on, whether or not the unit can die. So, probably.
Commissioner Bronckhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
No.
Commissioner Knight?
No.
Commissioner Vossen?
No.
Commissioner Milliken?
Yes.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion what?
Motion for. Two, three, five.
So, as, right now.
Okay.
Nothing's going to happen until July.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm still here, I'm, can you say that again?
I think it's valid.
All right.
Motion's held three more.
Okay, white paper, show your hand.
Uh, the.
I have my old white paper.
Okay, what you got? Well, I.
And I think you missed correctly, and all we're doing tonight is, 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 right, and, and, and start the process.
Correct.
If it hasn't been done already, I do, we start the process.
With the end date of August, the, for call for August, yes, there you have it, yes, there you have one.
So, we're going to play August eighteen instead of, um. Okay, but I'm sure someone would call for it and say it, because it's very confusing.
Uh, make a motion, that we ask that whether the change go on, get to August eighteen of the last call for August, and does that?
Yes, sir. Call for all of it. We'll need August eighteen, we'll print our call orders, and then, that's the only person, three times to you all, on what's your name, or, uh. Oh, yeah, hold on one, your, your, so, I want to make it clear, your, your motion is to ask them to change the date to August eighteen.
Right.
Are you, are you wanting to work the bill, or, or want to, okay, so that needs to be the motion, if you're, you're making the motion, you list the, the, the property, with a, a call for all for date of August eighteen.
And the original quote, that was one day.
Original name was last one, but they're pushing all, second for all, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Reason for that is, we're calling another half of the fire station number one, before we go through this one.
Charlie, I want you to say that, but I don't understand, because.
Okay.
Thank you, motion, what it happened.
My, my, the change of the motion is that, if, if you authorize, you can put a real stock property on, on the market for sale, when they call for orders, maybe, of August eighteen.
Okay, okay.
Claire.
I can't make that one.
That's what he said, whatever you say.
Ms. Roy, please restate the motion for the record.
I make a motion that we, uh, list the real one property, the, the call for August coming in on August eighteen. I second.
What is the square one?
And you, we're going to have suspension. I feel like I can take the panel, we're not being patient, and waiting to see what happens with fire station one, and worried about one from moving on to the budget, and we need to. They also, you know, just do now, they, that will be fire station one. So we're sitting in that, since we're on, yeah, is it working, I think, that would just be my recent, not in full. We have time. Call for.
Commissioner Bronckhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Vossen?
Okay.
Commissioner Milliken? Commissioner Poston?
Um, yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Vossen?